Follow the order. Stand for the votes, please.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? And music of the august and righteous fans. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ball order roll call, starting off my right.
Counselperson Josh Arnn.
Counselperson Brett Meyer.
Mayor Jimmy John King. Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah O'Leary.
First item of business tonight will be the oath of office. Bill, if you'd like to do that, please.
All right, we'll do each of you separately here. So Craig, I guess you're on top here, so I'll start with you. If you can please rise. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Craig Anderson.
I, Craig Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of councilmember.
The duties of councilmember.
Of the city of Stewartville.
The city of Stewartville.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I got a little souvenir for you there. Certificate of your election.
Cool.
And then during the course of the meeting, I'll sign these two forms and then I'll sign them later after the meeting. I'll bring back one for you and one for our archives. Alrighty, Josh. Please rise and repeat after me. Hopefully, everybody can see them, okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Josh Arnn.
I, Josh Arnn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of councilmember.
Of councilmember.
Of the city of Stewartville.
Of the city of Stewartville.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I have a souvenir there for you. During the course of the meeting afterward, if you want to sign both those and then I'll sign them later. So yeah. On behalf of our staff, as you all know the routine, welcome back. And we look forward to working with you for another term for each of you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you two guys for coming in. We're looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Let me post it approved.
Okay. The motion and second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Looking for approval of council meeting minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve them.
We have a motion to approve those minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Here, now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. That carries. Takes us to finance and budget. We've got some payable listing along with the additional listing there. Any questions on that? Let me ask finance director Garland.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Here, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. That'll take us into motions and general business. First item under motions and general business tonight is approval of appointments and setting meeting dates. Mayor King has submitted his twenty twenty-three appointments and designations for your consideration. Twenty twenty-three council board commission meeting schedule is also part of this packet. I hope you all approved it over it. Only other one I'd add would be councilmember Anderson will be vice mayor again, too. To approve the twenty twenty-three appointments and twenty twenty-three council board's commission meeting schedule submitted. Any questions or discussion? Do we look for a motion then?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or is there any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next one will be twenty twenty-three insurance. Alicia Nelson, first commander of insurance, will be at January the meeting to give an overall preview of the twenty twenty-three insurance coverage and discuss the municipal tort liability options.
Good evening. As we go through each year, I wanted to present to you the opportunity to waive the statutory tort limits or not to waive them. In waiving the statutory tort limits, an individual appointment could not recover more than five hundred thousand dollars from the city on any single claim. Whereas if you choose, I'm sorry, that is, if you choose not to waive the statutory tort limits. If you choose to waive them, then they could break a legal suit against you and potentially win up to the aggregate amount of the policy of the liability limit, which is two million dollars. So typically in years past, you've chosen not to waive the statutory tort liability limits. And so that's what I'm presenting to you as an option tonight. In addition to that, I wanted to mention that this year, the city, and Carla probably knows this already, is receiving twenty-two thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars in dividends from the League of Minnesota Cities. So it is a trust and premiums that are paid in and received and not paid out through claims are then redistributed to the city as dividends. So that's how much you'll be getting this year from last year's policy. And lastly, I wanted to go over the experience mod analysis for your work comp policy. Each year, the League of Minnesota Cities anticipates that based on the city of this size, the payroll that you have, the risks that you carry, that you're going to have a certain amount in claims filed. And each year that you don't file those claims to your work comp policy, you are assigned a experience modification. And that would be an indicator of the success of your safety program and your hiring practices and all the things that you're doing with your employees. So kudos to you. You have an experience modification of point nine four. Anything one or above would indicate that you have more claims than anticipated. Anything one or below would would show that you have less claims than anticipated for a city of this size. And having an experience mod under one means that you get a certain amount of credit off of your work comp premiums. So that bodes very well for the city. You continue to do well your career, so I just wanted to congratulate you on that again. And that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Questions, yes.
So what did we do last year? We waived it or we didn't waive it?
You always.
Waive it.
Waive it.
Waive it. No, we're not waving.
Not waving.
Not waving.
Sorry.
Yes.
Does not wave.
Does not wave the limits.
All right, glad to answer your question, Brett.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we do not waive.
That's not waived.
Well, first, we need to approve Alicia Nelson. There's the city's insurance agent for twenty twenty-three. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to what'd you say we do?
Nah, please.
Here, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick talk for the council. We want to thank Alicia, too, because during the course of the year, we have calls over to her for questionnaire, questionnaire, claim for minimal, which was a good thing. But current or officer always prompt on helping us out. Or in the case of a couple of little minor claims we did have to deal with, they helped us out right away and were able to get the process through, so we appreciate that.
You're very easy to support.
So bad, so grab a fire truck, say more, is already.
Yeah, I'm gonna smoke a bomb.
Taking care of it.
It's all, it's all.
Hiring practices have been.
Up till now.
Will be a problem in the future.
Yeah, I'll be better.
Thank you.
Alicia, you're welcome. Leave a good line if you need to stay. All right, next item will be lot split at two oh seven Third Street Southwest. The city received an application from Chairman Byrne for property on the two oh seven Third Street Southwest to split the lot for townhomes that are being constructed. Sliding commission held public hearing on January third and recommend approval of lot split. So they actually request it, we do approve and I'll lot split is submitted. That's just so they can sell two, isn't it?
Yes.
And the planning commission, was he okay with it? Any other questions or?
Were there concerns through you guys or not?
How was it then?
It was okay.
Basically, the property lines are never right down the middle of it?
No, not quite. If you look at it, it's a little skewed. The lot to the left is a little bit bigger. But when you look at it, it's gonna look.
But it'll split the house.
Split the house, yes, the house will be split.
All right, we're looking for a motion to approve or deny the split is submitted.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. All right, next item will be twenty twenty-three capital equipment plan replaced to two thousand six and two thousand eleven trucks, pickup trucks. It's purely approved twenty twenty-two capital equipment plan and the twenty twenty-three budgeted pickups are scheduled for replacement. These trucks were ordered in twenty twenty-two and planned for. The budget for these trucks will go over to twenty twenty-three and can be utilized in twenty twenty-three. The cost of the replacement of the two thousand six red Chevy truck and the two thousand eleven Chevy truck has been estimated at forty-two thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars each plus tax and licensing. We will be selling the trucks on public surplus once the new ones have been received. They're using state contract pricing and all Chevrolet is willing to match that state bid. We are recommending using our local dealership for these purchases. So the action's gonna be requested is to approve or deny the purchase of two twenty twenty-three Chevy Silver out of fifteen hundred regular cab trucks. They are in, Sean?
One is in, one should be in next week.
Any other questions? Is it just what we're looking for?
That's what we ordered.
All right, we're looking for a motion. When was the agreement expected, next week? They both met the statement and everything was fine.
They're exactly the same.
I'll make a motion to approve the two trucks for house. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Now take us to the next item, which is another capital equipment plan. Arrowboard trailer. As the approved twenty twenty-three capital equipment plan and the twenty twenty-three budget staff is recommended replacing the arrowboard. That's, that was on the red truck that we just.
That'll be, that was on one of the trucks that we're gonna be getting rid of.
Currently, the airboard is mounted on that truck. Staff is recommended that it be replaced with an arrowboard out trailer. This will allow for additional uses and versatility of this unit. We've had two companies quote for the trailer and the board. Earl F. Anderson at five thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Warning lights, five thousand six hundred and six dollars and thirty-five cents. The quote for warning lights is the state contract price. Earl F. Anderson was unable to match the state contracting price. So the council actually requested it be to approve or deny the purchase of the arrowboard trailer from the preferred provider.
And I'll note on that, we do a lot of business with Earl F. Anderson. So I did get a bid from him. They're great to work with. They were close enough in pricing. We just leave it up to you guys as to if you want to do a little bid or someone that we do more business with. Doesn't matter to me either way. It's just providing that information for you guys to make a judgment on. It's about three hundred seventy dollar price difference between the two.
Are they both in Minnesota or where are they?
Yeah. And they're, in honesty, they're both out of the cities. But we, like the signs we got, we do a lot of work with Earl F. Anderson and they've been very good to us. But I get that there's a price for stuff, so it's up to you guys how you wanna handle it.
Probably both the same trailer and the same arrowboard.
Yeah. Apple's rap was on the bid, or the prompt.
Discussion. Josh?
I find either way, I think if we work with Anderson more, I'm fine. They'll probably give us deals down the road or match if they can.
Brett?
It don't matter to me. I do whatever Sean wants to do. It's only three hundred seventy dollars.
Sean will do whatever you want.
Comes out his budget, so.
Greg, what do you think?
How much business are you talking, Sean? Like, how, do we just deal with stuff like this maybe once a year or something? With this, yes, but Earl F. Anderson has a lot of different things. Like our signs right there, those are made by Earl F. Anderson. All our street signs, all our posts. There's just a ton of different things we do with Earl F. Anderson. I wouldn't, I really don't care which way we go. But if you have guys that you're comfortable working with, and I know we've talked in the past that there's a price difference in there, and that's up to you guys to decide what that, what that level is. Yeah, if you guys are comfortable with that company, I don't, I'm fine with calling it that.
Jeremiah?
Well, I mean, is Earl F. Anderson gonna stop doing business with us if we go with warning lights? I mean.
So.
I, I, yeah.
No, I don't think so. His question was, do you think Earl F. Anderson quit doing business with us if we go with warning lights?
No, no.
Right now.
It's just, you wanna keep a good working relationship.
Well, I mean, you just, you have that confidence that you're gonna get. If we have issues with it, you feel more confident that we're gonna get. And I'm not bashing warning lights at all. They're a good company. They're a big company out of the cities. They're the only real company that's on the system, so. I don't have any direct business that I've dealt with them directly, so I don't know what I'm getting there. Earl F. kind of know what I'm getting. And the rep we have in our area takes good care of us.
For most of our CIP projects, warning lights is the company that comes down and puts all of our traffic control down, so they do work here.
Is there delivery charge on this or you gotta go get them?
That's the price, everything. Both of them are.
Delivery prices are included with both. All right, we get a motion. Motion?
I'll make a motion to go with Earl F. Anderson.
We have a motion to go with Earl F. Anderson. Do we have a second for that?
A second.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Is there any other questions or discussion about that? If not, all in favor of going with Earl F. Anderson?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. We'll get it. All right, twenty twenty-three CIP project update and workshop. Jenna?
All right, so we did take bids in, in December. Both the twenty twenty-three CIP project, north and south. Evaluating those bids and looking at what our assessment policy would state. I can state that prices did not go down.
You're talking per lot price?
Per linear foot.
Great. The bid on the far end went down half million dollars, but the lot price stayed the same.
So the, the south side, yeah. So we can't compare the exact bids to last year's because last year's project included the alley that we did separately. So it's not but the assessment rate price or the project down there, it didn't go down.
How was that? How come?
How come?
Because the project price went down. I mean, I know it didn't go down the whole half million because we take some of it, but it went down a couple hundred thousand.
Right, so the portions that went down were more or less on the sanitary and water. So it's our utilities that didn't go up, but those streets stayed the same on those bids.
The portions that we can assess.
The portions that we assess.
I know what she's saying, but I'm trying to.
It's based on how they bid.
No, I understand, I understand, but you gotta remember, my problem was the price per lot.
Right, and so looking at the per lot price or linear foot price compared to the past few years, it has incrementally gone up in between twenty to forty percent each year. And we are within that range for this year. I don't believe legally we can get through changing the assessment policy for this one as, because we have to go through and we're gonna have to bond with the four twenty-nine bonds. And in order to do four twenty-nine bonds, at least twenty percent of the project has to be covered by assessments. And so if we start decreasing the amount of assessments, we're no longer hitting that limit and we're getting out of ways to pay for the project. One thing that we could do, council could do, because it's not actually in our policy, is how many years that assessment is applied. So by state statute, we can go up to fifteen years. We've typically only done ten. So we can extend that payment period for property owners at your direction. That would be one way to minimize the impact for those property owners. Carla, I have a question, anything? I think that's about it.
Is there anything that's rebatable on that or? Some, um?
So one thing, and this is a totally separate subject, but looking into how we pay for projects and what would be a different way besides assessments. If we were to go through that and potentially find another way, you know, whenever you change something, you're always gonna have people say, but I had to do it this way. And other cities who have gone through and gotten out of assessing projects by changing ways to fund them, they have set up rebate programs, basically, so that there's no overlap in that payment. For example, the city of Faribault has a meter charge for gas and electric. And that all of those funds go to their street improvement because Minnesota statute states we can't have a street fund designated to tech, or to
Collect money.
Collect money just for streets. Now, that's also being brought up into the legislature, so that's there, too. But it is being talked about more and more in the legislature. I don't know how far it will go. Last time it got kicked out. So their way around it was to illegally, they had the meetings, they went through things and got these fees basically put on per month for, and it was a different level for residential houses versus businesses versus industries. And they went through a lot of calculations and determined what they would need to fund their program with how many buildings and residences and everything. Then when they got through that and they adopted that policy into place, for everyone who had a current assessment still on the books, they set it up so that they can bring their tax statement and their utility bill and get rebated that utility bill. So they are not paying double. They, you can't take the assessments off once it's on, but they can rebate for, for that fund. And so for, they do the fifteen-year policy and they adopted it last year. So they're fourteen years into it, so for the next, or they're one year into it. For the next fourteen years, they'll be giving people rebates on that, which will take away from their pot, but then in fourteen years, it'll just be a working capital to do their projects. So that's one option we can look into for future things, but it doesn't help us with these projects that need to get done right now.
All right, my next question, Jenna, is we're, so the per foot will be the same on the north half as it is on the south, or the south, north end as it is on the south end?
So the north half actually calculates to be a lower linear foot price than the south half with the two different contractors. The prices came in differently. And with cutting out portion of the street, because we only assess for thirty-six feet, but our street is that forty-four foot. So it took that percentage off of building a new road before applying our linear footages to this. And the north half, actually, the rate is one fourteen fifty-one that I calculate based off of the bid prices.
How much was that generated here?
One hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents per.
What'd you say the south end was?
South end was one nineteen thirty. At all of the meetings, we had been promising that one side's not gonna pay more than the other.
Right.
I thought it would be reversed, but I still think we can apply that same rate to the south and hit our twenty percent and still be able to do our four twenty-nine. So it's nowhere near where we used to bid, but again, it's within every step we've been taking for the past five years. Makes sense.
Somebody else up here, got any questions?
What was it two years ago?
We looked it up this morning. Eighty-nine.
I was gonna say eighty-seven.
It was eighty-nine something. So it went up about thirty-two or thirty-four percent. Thirty-two to thirty-four. We have had years when it went up forty percent. And but then there's been years that have had to up twenty. And every, from twenty sixteen, that's been the progression beside one year. And that one year where it didn't progress that way was the year that I think you had the most complaints about the time it took for the contractor to get done. I don't know where else to say it, but so we're proposing to have a workshop to talk about assessments and hopefully then also bring this in front of you to accept these contracts at the next meeting. But I wanted you guys to.
The ones that got the contractor that the north has, have you ever worked with him?
I have not personally worked with him, but.
Do they do a lot of work at Rochester?
They do. And they did one of the projects I designed for Rochester. We just, I didn't do the construction administration on it. But they've Rochester hasn't had anything bad to say.
I've heard good things about them. They've always been a product.
Yeah, I know. They've been a product since I've been.
Yeah. Yes, so that, the what it looks like is the north end would be A-one and the south end would be L-four.
If they're approved.
If they are approved. So I know you don't have the tabulations in front of you who wanted to have a conversation here because it is a figure of health as well for what's going on with the property owners here. Any other questions? And I guess, looking to have that workshop, is there an opinion about?
You want a workshop? Excuse me, Jenna, before the next meeting, at the next meeting, during the next week?
I think I guess it would depend on where your thoughts are going on these two projects.
Excuse me.
Like I said, I legally don't think we can do anything to change the outcome here. And if we rebid them, I don't think it's gonna get any better. And there is the need that they have to get done, so. And there is the need that they have to get done, so my official recommendation would be to approve the contracts at the next meeting. But if you wanna have more conversation about it, then we should have the workshop before the next meeting.
What are you gonna say? Can you at least send us the copies or what the prices are? I didn't see nothing. What's the length of the current assessment, like how long can, how long is it spread out right now?
Right now, it's over ten years. We've typically done ten years, but it's not officially written in the policy that it has to be ten years. So by statute, it can be up to fifteen.
Is that why Faribault did that, because it could go up to fifteen?
They could go up to fifteen, so they haven't done fifteen.
Caroline, what's uh, what's it on this, on these two streets? What's kind of the average length of a lot?
About sixty-six feet.
Okay, that's kind of what it's gonna come.
And I do caution, like, looking at the rates and everything, it's how do we fund the project without being able to get a four twenty-nine bond? So, we can't get below that twenty percent of the entire project that the assessments are paying for. Right now, with this calculated rate, we are at twenty-three percent of the project is what the assessments are paying for. And that's already taking out everything I can take out in cost. If I were to look at the entire project, we'd be already under the twenty percent. And that's why our policy was written that to go with twenty-five percent of the total cost of the street in storm. And then it actually averages down because the city takes a portion of it. And it, but we need to stay above twenty percent or else we can't bond.
Great. I don't like any of that.
I think, I don't think having a workshop this, in the next week or two is gonna make a change on this. I think we're gonna probably have to move forward with it, but I think we have to really sit down and look at how we do this stuff down the road.
And if that's the case, then I still recommend a workshop so we can sit down and look at.
Yeah, but you're not gonna rush it to get it in here.
No, it can't apply to this project, or these projects, that's basically what I'm saying.
I think we'll take the next week before the next meeting, before we decide to approve or not approve it. And you got any questions?
So we can get our minds. You're gonna send us something, right?
And I, I will send you the bid tabs, and so you can look at it all. And yeah, we can forward you guys the summary and funding of how it rolled down.
Just out of curiosity, how many contractors bid it?
Uh, there were, let me pull up the actual bid table. Four and three. So after the first one was bid, one contractor did not bid on the second one, so if they realized they wouldn't be competitive.
We'll put our questions to you, Jen, and see if we can get them answered before the next meeting.
Okay.
I guess we're gonna call for a workshop, we'll try and work it out.
Yeah, we'll tackle this one separate, and we'll still do our citywide workshop, but.
So, but, I guess the calling for the workshop would be to do a workshop of reevaluating how we're financing projects for the future. Depends on how fast we can act. But yeah, we got February or March.
Was it that the one thing that didn't have any attachment to our packet ended up being the longest item of the night?
It's the biggest deal for, it's the second biggest deal, I guess, I'd argue. All right, Jen, thank you, and you guys come up with some questions for her, and see if we can get this figured out. I gotta tell you, it was a heavy heart, this next one is, I'm gonna ask Fire Chief Swisher for, he's going to give us his resignation, I guess.
Yeah, so as a, as an employee case, I received a conditional offer that I've accepted with the Ankeny Iowa Fire Department. So I'll be starting there on February twentieth. Looking at the bylaws, bringing with the existing executive award, on how that transfer of authority for the fire chief and the continuity of operations for the fire department would occur. We looked at our past practice, which is what happened when Chief Wallach left, State of Stirville to go to Newton, Iowa, then also looked at bylaws. So basically, two things will happen. Upon my resignation at the business meeting on February thirteenth, Assistant Chief Brandon Dolan will move up to Fire Chief. Brandon said his desire to be Fire Chief for a while. The goal was for me to mentor him for about three years, so that he'd be ready to take it in about three years. Unfortunately, he gets a loan.
Well, you gave him three weeks.
Yeah, three weeks, you gave him three weeks, so. We said three, I didn't specify who the three was, so. So that leaves an opening at the Assistant Chief level. The Executive Board, Brandon and Josh Bodine, all kind of discussed it. Josh is gonna be appointed as Assistant Chief. I really think that team between Josh Bodine and Brandon Dolan will be a great team to work together and build one before. We're actually at a really good point with the organization. Everything's moving forward quite well. We've got a strong executive board that's got a lot of experience, we got a strong officers corps. They have a lot of experience, a lot of our senior people are still there. So Steve Denny, Mike Bodine, Mark Bodine, Greg House, Bob Robertson. So we got a long, a long history of people there that really helped Brandon and Josh kind of move into these roles. So I don't see any opportunity that there's gonna be any problems with the transition or the quality of the service the department's providing moving forward, so.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you on your new job, Vance.
Appreciate it.
You've earned it, I'm sure, you've done a wonderful job here, you've been a blessing to this community since I worked with you. Been good to work with, you've always done what we asked and helped out. You're a little hard on the equipment when we let you drive it.
Yeah, I like that word a lot.
Brandon, we welcome you on board, but I'm gonna tell you, you've got some very big shoes to fill.
Understood.
This guy did a wonderful job, I know they're in for a great job down there in Iowa. I hope they know what they're getting, appreciate it.
I think they do, have got nothing but positive responses and actually a couple of physical threats about leaving both Rochester in here, so we'll see if I can make it out of here before, before that happens. I will be around until August, so Krista, obviously, being a school teacher, she's gotta finish out her contract with the school district. Not knowing what Hannah's gonna do this summer, which comes back from college, where I go plan to sell the house till probably August. So I will be on the fire department till August, so I can help transition Josh and Brandon. And I've offered my cell phone number, so all I have to do is call and I can help them work through some opportunities maybe they're not used to or not comfortable with quite yet, so.
You've, you've helped move our fire department into twenty-four percent or beyond, and you've done some great things for this community with some of these lock boxes and a lot of these other ideas you came up with. I hate to see that.
We got a great team. We, I, I opened the door for them, but they kind of pushed through it, so they.
Hey, you're getting here, we could've upped you a little bit. We could've give you a next to nothing.
It's true. We're paying pretty good, so.
My hands thank you very much for the service you give us. You guys have anything else you wanna add to it?
Appreciate it.
We're gonna miss your reports.
You'll need an motion to.
What'd you pick? Do you have ties on there?
I, no, so it is, Ankeny actually was the last apartment I was on test for, so I was kind of at the point that, okay, I'm done testing, I had limited amount of time left in Rochester. Ankeny is actually three hours closer to Nathan. He is now a firefighter in Alatham, Kansas, so it must be three hours closer there. It's three hours closer, so it's three hours from Ankeny to Nathan. Three hours closer to my mom, dad, and all the homeless, so it's only six hours to go see them. Krista actually grew up in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, so now it's only, instead of three hours, it's only two hours there. So it kind of cuts, puts us in the middle of everybody. The only downside is, it's gonna be an hour and a half from Hannah over Mankato, now it's three hours, so she's got a little bit longer drive, so. And then just the, the department's the right fit. It's very similar, very similar to Stirville in, in construction. And then, not quite as big as Rochester, but it's got a lot of growth, they're growing like leaps and bounds, so.
All right, we're gonna need a motion to accept Chief Swisher's resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Polls? All right, get out of there with Brandon sitting in that chair.
Thanks, Vance.
I got one month, it's not till next month, I quit.
Thanks, Vance.
Appreciate it.
All right, was that the last item under, you need a major report? All right, Texas Mayor's report tonight. City of Stirfield would like to send their sympathies out to the families of Virginia Wench, Kenny Kramer, Joyce Johnson, Helen Dangan, Mark Keefe, Reverend Dr. Lyle Leader, Sheila Donahue, Becky P. Doc, Nick Majerst, and Karen Molti. Also, over at our senior center, we'd like to send a happy birthday to Sharon McKee. And we're gonna send out a happy new year to everybody here. We did, you know, we've had quite a break since the holidays, and we got everybody back here for now. There's gonna be another, another great session with these guys and with the staff we have here in Stirfield. Nothing but good things are gonna happen from here on out, and I've got a little. Thank you, Carter, Nick, Reeve, your city and Public Works crew, thank you so much for your help and support to the Winterfest twenty-two. It's always such a magical event for the Stu, really appreciate working with you. Thank you, Moon Ravenholtz, Megan Romans, Melissa. Boy, some of these guys work, these gals write worse than I do, I can't. The whole crew. I'll get the senior names on here, try to. All right, that's all I got, Bill, what do you have?
Uh, reports in your packet. Obviously, as you can read through everything, we're off to a great start already, starting the year with a bang here of projects and getting involved in the things ahead for the coming year. And then the other thing really to bring your attention is, we'd like to do that council staff workshop early in the year here. So we'll send out some polling dates near the end of January, first part of February or whatever. And then that's your opportunity as well, if you have some new projects that citizens have come to you about, or you've got a near list of things you'd like us to look into, your chance to let us know and then we'll give you, get you updated on things that may foresee or either coming this year and give you updates there or some horizon items, so.
All right, any questions for Administrator Bill? All right, thank you. I'll take us to our Finance Director, Carla.
We had the auditors here last week for prelim budget, or prelim audit, sorry, and started working on that and can, gonna continue to move forward on that. Have everything kind of rolling for twenty twenty-three and just trying to, to follow up on everything that we need to get completed for the winter, so.
Any questions for Finance Director? All right, Carla, thank you. Public Works Director, Sean?
Uh, after several days of fifty mile an hour winds and then another week of three, four days of slush and slop, and we've had several complaints about the roads. Brent asked me the other day, what do we do, and that's, it'd never been our policy, but we turn our spreaders on and cover an entire street because we're low speed roads. And we knew the intersections and stuff like that, and ice did get built up during that slush storm. We clogged twice in one day, the one day trying to stay ahead of it. So, they are what they are, and the weather's warming up, they're starting to disappear, so the complaints will start disappearing. But when we get the wet, heavy stuff, complaints seem to rise a hundred times more than if we get regular ten-inch snowfall. If it's light and fluffy, it doesn't cause problems.
Well, I have to say, after this mess you went through and the long plowing you had to do, for this time of year, the streets are as well as good in shape as I've seen them in quite a while, they really are.
They get, it's nice a couple of days, it'll help a ton.
So they've, you know, as long as you can weather the storm, it always comes out a little sunny on the other end. I think they're doing just fine, myself.
We do have some new plow drivers where the roads were a little airworthy, weren't getting the curbs, we've talked to them about it. They're improving, they're, Brent and I had talked about, there's some like curves where they didn't throw sand out. The new guys don't realize what spots get as slippery, you know, the high traffic areas that cars idle and buzz that, and they'll learn that as they go, and we pointed out some as we're going now, so they should start figuring that stuff out as the winter goes here. But we got all new plow drivers in every row.
Some of these, and all those people that live here forever can't figure out, you drive on what snow and pack and put a policy there, it's gonna be ice and it's gonna be hard to get up, so. I've got a wife that does that.
Mark, put that in the paper.
We discuss, Mark, you can put it in here, but we discuss it at home, at Raisin Hall.
And the other issue, we're probably, if we haven't had any wait sign yet, we have not even been opening the hockey rinks because of the conditions last week. And now it's warmer, we, we are still flooding them, the guys come in the middle of the night. Last night, we flooded for several coats on, trying to get them brought back up, but you just can't make ice when it gets this warm like this, so. We'll keep adding, obviously, it's early enough in the year, we're not giving up on it, but we aren't gonna open it unless they get good enough condition that they're safe enough for kids to skate on. And then the last thing is, if you guys look here, we finally got the historical signs that Sandra put together and did a great job, they look great. These are the ones that we'll be putting in Lake Florence. Three of them will be at the historical place at Lake Florence, one describing the dam. It'll face off the direction the dam is, one's gonna face where the river and give a, or the old lake. It'll give a history of the old lake, and then one will be where the old mill went. And they'll, they'll look like this with different pictures and different in each one. Then we got one for the cannon that's gonna go down at the BMW Memorial. So there, they're in, we'll get the stands built. We'll get the stands built for those and get them put up first thing, so they're there for the entire spring and summer this year.
They look great.
Yeah, same.
Sandra did a great job on this. Any other questions for Sean? Thank you, Sean, tell the guys to keep it up, they're doing good. All right, Jenny, you got any more to report?
I think I gave you enough.
I have a question.
Okay.
We had, we had a park board meeting last night.
Yes.
We had the drawings in. The bathrooms.
Yeah.
We have the drawings, yeah.
So is your excavation drawings gone?
Yes.
So they go off a bid, or what's the plan on that?
So we talked about it this morning, Sean does need some technical specs from me, and I said we can have those done by Friday of this week, so.
Okay, so then all, what would it be off a bid for, just out of curiosity?
So, this type of projects, it all depends on the, you know, the total cost of the project, but as long as it is under three fifty, you need ten days of bidding or of publication for this.
So by?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
In a, in a month, should be pretty far, roughly?
Yes.
With just the water and sewer part, we might have to wait till the weather breaks to start the footings off.
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm just getting the, but the bid zone.
What happened on?
Yep, yeah, get the contractors at least.
One thing we forgot to mention earlier, the issue with the wastewater position and scheduling a meeting with personnel that I should've brought up during my section there. If you guys were aware, the guy that we had hired came and worked for a few days throughout the month of December, and then towards the end of, right towards the end of the first of the year there, before the first of the year, he called and said he's having personal things that he's gonna have to pull out of the position. So we now, we, we went to the next person, we, we felt fairly confident in the first two. We offered to the second guy, and he took it back, and the place where he's at has offered him more money to stay there, and he's now staying there. So, we are, would like to maybe set up a meeting with personnel, which is now Josh and Greg, to see what we wanna, the next step we wanna go to.
We're looking at a couple options we'll lay out for you. I think we'll have some temporary help because SEH has agreed to help us with some of their wastewater staff in the interim. And then by seeing a renewed interest, like some of our staff, to keep going with this training might help us out, so we wanna visit with you guys on that and see what temporarily get us by and then what might be a more permanent fix.
All right, any other questions for you, Rick?
We'll call you each with some dates coming up here, copy of your schedule.
Little Library Director, Fire Chief report?
All right, December is kind of a slow month for us, we don't have any training. It's kind of a month we give our staff off to kind of be with their family, rest and relax a little bit. But we did have a busy month with calls. We had fifty-one medicals in December and twelve fire-related calls. Four of those fire-related calls were structure fires. We had the Racine Auto Shop fire that we talked about last, City Council meeting I attended. We had a single-family garage fire in Stirville where a vehicle caught on fire in the garage. Crews were able to get there quickly, isolate the garage and keep everything out of the home, and the people were able to stay in their home that night.
Is that an electric vehicle?
No. Here's a three quarter zone. Here's a three quarters of it. Half ton pickup, so, yeah. So no batteries on that one. We did have a structure fire that started out in Rochester's district. The call taker placed it in Rochester's district. They saw it from a great distance. Rochester got there, it was abandoned home right there on St. Bridget's Road and County sixteen, which is quite a ways in the Sturville's district. Rochester laid all their hose out, we didn't choose not to clarify that it was our fire, but we provided taker support to them, let them have their stuff out cold, and worked out relatively well for, for our people, so. No complaints on our staff of not having to be out in the cold for that fire. Then the last fire we had, Rochester had a very busy day where they had two structure fires going at the same time and a motor vehicle accident. Rochester had most of their units committed way northeast. They called for Byron and Sturville, Sturville was going to Rochester for a motor vehicle accident right there at Twelfth and Main or Broadway, so we were gonna be pretty deep inside Rochester. That got vehicle accident, once RBD got on scene, there were no accidents there, there were no injuries per se. So we diverted our apparatus to fire the northwest side of Rochester and helped Rochester out with that. So we sent Engine Two and Truck One. We did have more enough staff back in town to staff Engine One and the rescue, so we had no concerns about being unstaffed here in town. We were in Rochester maybe for about thirty, thirty, forty minutes at the most, so, and they broke us loose as soon as they could. One gas leak, four fire alarms, two motor vehicle accidents, and one public service. Additional with that, as we talked about my resignation at the next business meeting on February thirteenth, Bill will be there to give Brandon and Josh their oath of office, and then Brandon and Josh will be at the meeting on February fourteenth with you. Engine Three is coming along, still looks like it will be on task to be here in Sturville around April, May, June at the latest, most likely. So the department is looking at loose equipment now, starting to preorder that, so the equipment's here, when the apparatus gets here, we'll put it in services as quickly as possible. And that's it for my final city council meeting.
Any questions for the now resigned Chief Swisher? All right, thank you, Vance. Chamber of Commerce, the committee commission board reports, right? Yep. Chamber of Commerce, click on that. Thank you. You got their, they got their year review, and I believe they also have, if this ever comes up, they have their year annual meeting on there too, don't they?
Yep.
If any of you and your guests are interested in attending, let us know, or would you sign up if you have the power?
And that's the twenty-seventh, right, of January?
January, yeah, Friday night.
It's a Friday night, that's you.
Oh, sooner they need it, no way. The sooner the better.
Yep.
All right, next item is EDA HRA. That's in the packet here. We handed out a bunch more money at that one, remember that? We had quite a few people apply for that last, at the end of that certification program.
Yeah, we only made it to the last one.
All right. Finance? Nothing?
Nothing until we'll have stuff for audit coming up.
Library?
Nothing.
Park board?
That last night, the biggest item was, we got to see the new restrooms, the concession stands for that amphitheater.
Personnel?
Can't believe both of us-
That's dropped.
They just didn't realize what a cool place this system is. We've got things money can't buy here. Plans on it? Anything coming up?
Right now.
Minutes, January third in the packet, public safety. Jason, do you know?
Yeah, at the, it's about the start of the year, the second, the stipulations for the second year of the sheriff's contract went into effect. So I returned as the, as Sturville's community deputy, and then also then the new additional power cars started coverage beginning of the year, so.
So how many cars we have coming up?
At this moment, there are three of us working right now.
So we're extra saved now.
We're extra saved.
I'll sleep better then. Public Works? Ready?
Minutes from the last two of their meetings, nothing really highlighting for Sturville at this point in time.
Okay. Hold on.
We're meeting this month for the first time in a couple of months, so that won't be until the other month.
Justice Committee? Communications, we got one from Mid Energy about rate increases?
Oh, come on.
I can't. Can you read through that, read about what the rate increases are and what they're gonna do and what all this causes, whistle and bells. Open mic. See, council welcomes, encourages participation with community members. Please keep in mind that the comments must be purposes in business, must adhere to that advisory rules. That motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?